Thank you, everyone, and welcome to the school committee meeting of November 13th, 2019. I would like to remind everyone that is here this evening, this meeting is being broadcast live and is also being recorded for use at a later date if need be, so please keep that in mind. I would ask you to please join me in a moment of silence and keep the wustafire fighter that lost his life today in a fire in your thoughts. Please rise, pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you all for coming this evening. If anyone plans to speak this evening, please come up to the podium and state your name and address, speak loud and clear so everybody can hear it, and for those that are in the gallery or that are sitting, please keep in mind, when whoever has the floor, try to keep quiet so everyone can hear what's going on and then everyone will have a chance to speak. There's no issues, so please be respectful to each other. An entertaining motion to approve the minutes of November 5th, 2019.
Pass over.
She said to pass over.
Pass over.
Thanks, Michelle. You pass over that.
It's only been a few days.
Michelle, is Tori here?
Tori's not.
No, she's, I think she's.
Okay, our student advisor is on assignment and will be here the next meeting. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Every year, the Mass Association of School Superintendents asks each school, high school in the Commonwealth to recognize two outstanding students for the MASSS Academic Excellence Award. Tonight, we have two of those students, and I'd like to present them with official certificates from our association. This is a certificate of academic excellence, having duly qualified, and I'll announce each individual person, having duly qualified under the standards prescribed by the Mass Association of School Superintendents, is hereby awarded this certificate of academic excellence. And witness Harof, the seal of the association and the signature of the superintendent of schools, is heretofore affixed.
So if I'm going to ask Nicholas Femia and Chloe Wilson to come forward right up front. Screen still here.
Well done. Well done.
You guys can go home and study for AP.
Yeah, Nick.
Michelle. So we're going to pass over the food?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to ask to move past the food pantry donation. That's going to be next month, according to Michelle. Towne Hansen cell tower placement. I received, it's in your packet, I received a notice from Mary Marini around yesterday, November 12th, the zoning board of appeals will continue to hear, continue the hearing on the cell tower at the middle school. Verizon is proposing to move the tower 100 feet south of its original location due to concerns by the abutters. Attached is the revised revision. She's asking us to, that the school district approve the relocation and the lease would be needed to amend as its references, the plan in Exhibit B. Hanson Town Council is aware of the request and will make the revisions to the lease if approved by the district and zoning board of appeals. So I'm asking the school committee to review and move forward. It's 100 feet different.
An entertaining motion to accept.
So moved.
As you read, as you see in your plan, this says attached to the revised plans and they've been attached to the relocation. This is also amending the lease at the same time because we're relocating the tower 100 miles south, I mean 100 feet south. So consequently, the lease part's going to be revoked too. Does everyone understand that? We have any discussion? Chris?
So where was it before?
It was...
100 feet north.
Land north or actual north? What are we talking about here?
Okay. There's the building.
I thought it was back here before.
Here's where it was before. It's going to be back here by the sewerage system.
Well, it says proposed.
This is north.
Proposed Verizon.
Yeah, that's where it was.
That's the parking lot. That's the front. And the sewerage thing is somewhere over there. So it's going to be further away. These are, should show you East Washington Street over here. There's Liberty, the main road. There's the driveway in. Go ahead.
There we go.
The septic system should say right in here, somewhere around here, there's a septic system in this vicinity, and they're moving it this way.
So this is an old...
This is the parking lot.
Yep.
That you see.
Right.
It was over here somewhere before, closer to these homes, and they're moving it south. This would be north.
Yep.
They're moving it this way, 100 feet.
So what's the distance it will be from the school? I'm just curious.
I believe it's going to be a couple 350 feet or so from the school. When you come into the back of the parking lot, the school buffer zone between there and the septic system is probably 350 to 450 feet, and I believe it's going to be 100 feet from there. Towards, if you look through the woods from an aerial view, Whitman Street cuts over to Winter Street, and they intersect. It's in that type of direction, but to tell you exact square footage, I wasn't at the meeting either.
Ms. Davis?
Fred?
Still subvert all the rules and regulations of the Towne Hansen as far as fall zones, et cetera.
Yes. That was part of the original, I was at one of the original meetings that the fall zone didn't give enough space, even though it's pretty heavily wooded, the fall zone itself.
Okay.
I guess the town has regulations for how many feet, and they needed relief from that. That's why they moved it 100 feet, I believe.
Okay.
As far as I'm told, I was not at that meeting, but I know that layout pretty well. This should be Whitman Street. Oh, it doesn't even show Street.
No. I'm just assuming this is an old map if it's, if that's the, was the old proposed Verizon lease area?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Chair Hayes, last year, when this was brought up, was there talk about the provider offering any type of educational or programs or...
Yes.
Not with the school? Can we review any?
Yes, Jeff.
We, I'd have to go back to, but that was part of their original presentation, was they would provide education and service to the regional school district once they put the tower there. For us, bringing that tower, not only for the folks of Hanson, for us as a school community, communication is lacking cellularly in Hanson, and it is, it can become problematic during a safety issue. So the sooner this tower gets up, the better off we are with communications internally and externally with our EMS providers.
I believe, Don, also, they were going to put some EMS stuff on the tower itself for Whitman, I mean for Hanson Fire and Hanson Police.
Okay. But educationally, do we know what they were going to offer or...
I'd have to go back. The presentation was early last year or even the year before, so.
I can recall because that was one of my questions to them, and they said they would be glad to work with our administration, develop what would be appropriate at the time, because as we know, technology is changing ever rapidly.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we're about to flip over to 5G now, so, you know, they were, well, very, very willing.
Lost that in time here.
Anyone else? Chris?
So no concerns have been voiced or brought forward by anyone in relationship to the movement being potentially a little closer to the school?
Nothing, nothing to us.
That's what I wanted to make sure. I think, I don't know if that's where you would go on question.
Yeah, exactly, and I...
Where's it going? Is there any...
I thought you said it's further away, correct? Even when I identify where it is.
Yes, even better. So it's further away?
Yeah.
Thank you.
There's no recess or anything?
Anyone else? Seeing no other questions, we move to the vote. All those in favor? Any animus? Thank you.
Thank you.
George?
So tonight, we have our principals with us, and they will, by level, elementary, middle, and high school, they're going to give you an update, give you an update on recent MCAS results, and also where we're at with the curriculum and some of the things that we're piloting, especially at the elementary. I leave it to that esteemed group.
Thanks for your kind words. Darlene Foley, I'm the principal at Deval Elementary. I'm here with Karen Downey from Conley and also Gary Pelletier from Indian Head. So for MCAS 2019 spring, overall, all three elementary schools are making steady progress towards the improvement targets that are established by DESI. In ELA specifically, all three elementary schools demonstrated student growth that was within expected average range. The overall ELA performance target schools for, target scores for all students took a slight dip but still remained with the state target scores. For math, all three elementary schools, similar to ELA, demonstrated student growth within the expected average range. There was no change in the overall performance target scores for all students. For the science, technology, engineering, there's no growth score because that test is not given annually, it's just given in grades five, eight, and 10. So for the two fifth grade cohorts at Deval and Conley, there was no change in the overall performance target scores for all students, but we were five points above the state target score. So our results are typically in the, consistently in that average range. Last year, we piloted two new math programs, and the district purchased Ready Math, and we are implementing Ready Math K through five with fidelity. And we know that, you know, we're all working towards improved MCAS scores, but we know that that will take time, especially since some of our kids have had three math programs over the last couple of years, Envision, Bridges, and Ready Math. So there are certainly gaps that need to be filled, so.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Good evening. Bill Tranta, principal at Hanson Middle School, speaking on behalf of the middle schools. Before I start, I want to answer your question, Ms. Byers, on the educational portion with the cellphone tower. I was in contact with the folks from Verizon at the end of the school year, and we were talking about developing a program for them to provide to middle school students. We're looking to continue the conversation sometime after the first of the year because they didn't have anything in place at the time, and they were going to develop something, and we wanted to give them enough time to do that and come back to it. So we're hoping that they'll be able to do something somewhere around the April, May timeframe.
Thank you.
So that is in the works. With regards to the middle school MCAS scores, pretty much similar to the elementary, we're right in the middle of terms of state average. When we looked at the scaled scores in all of our grades in ELA, math, and science, our scale scores were either at or one or two points above or below the scaled average of the state, so there was not much of a difference. The one area that we were able to notice that when you look at the exceeding meeting and partially met, we were right pretty much at the state average except for not meeting. We were below the state average, which is a good thing because we have fewer students not meeting. So we're right there. We'd like to do better, but there's things that we did see. Our ELA scores were a little better than we had expected, considering the fact that our current eighth graders are the first groups that haven't had a literacy program in the elementary schools. Now that we're starting to implement literacy in the elementary schools and doing a couple pilots, and I get the privilege of being able to see that firsthand with the fifth grade, they're noticing a big difference. So we're, we have a lot of hope based on what we're seeing in those pilots, so when we implement something next year, we're expecting those scores to rise. And our science scores were pretty good considering it's the first time that they gave the next generation test when they redesigned all of the state standards. We now have a new math program, which our math scores typically, that's where we're the weakest, but we're still right at the state average, and we're hoping that with the new math program in the elementary schools, our math teachers and elementary teachers are finding that the Ready Math, is it Ready Math or iReady? Because I know they're both similar. One's diagnostic and one's...
The iReady's the diagnostic piece, the Ready Math is the program itself.
So we're looking to implement the iReady diagnostic program next year, sixth, seventh, and eighth, which will give us an advantage of being able to give a test to determine students' weakness, grade level, and implement remedial work based on that test. Right now, we don't have that type of tool handy to us, so we're hoping that working with our math teachers, that that's going to make a big difference. Also, like I said, the literacy program and working with Amy Fleck and her initiative going with the high school into the middle school using Notice and Notes, which is a kind of a close reading program that our teachers really like, and we're starting to see some evidence of improvement there. One area of weakness in all that is writing, and we're starting to do more writing to pull up the writing scores. They've been spending a lot of time on the narrative writing so far in the fall, so we're going to be working on that as we head towards the MCAS test in the spring.
Thank you.
And if I could just follow up?
Well, I just have a general question, though.
Sure.
Do we have reports of the scores? Is there, Chair?
Yeah, you can have whatever it is that you'd like. Today, we just reported out. Last year, we just reported out what our general scores were, but if there's anything you want particularly, I can get them for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up with Bill for a second, is that the math program that we have at the elementary, the iReady Math and the Ready Math curriculum, if we do extend and take that diagnostic to the middle school, the goal is to reach some of those pieces that we really haven't been able to reach in math, and that's why we're looking at continuity. We're not looking at purchasing a new program for the middle school, we're looking at just purchasing the diagnostic, which would be three areas of the school year where you stop, take a test. It tells now what the weaknesses are that the student has, but it also then, you can compare that to the standards of which you have to cover. So hopefully, we can marry some of those deficiencies a little bit better.
Thank you, Bill.
Good evening. Chris Jones from the high school. I just, basically the same thing you heard as far as scores, we're right in the middle, where most of our scores are either a point or two above or a point or two below the state average. A couple of things to make note of is that we're designated as making substantial progress towards the targets as designated by DESI, towards meeting all our improvement targets. It was a new year last year for the high school in the areas of English and math because we went to the computer-based testing with the next generation MCAS. So we had to do some training of teachers and even working with some students on taking these. Students had seen it in the middle school, but the bigger issue was teachers and us being able to handle it with our infrastructure, handle the computer-based testing. It went well. Our students performed well for what we were expecting, and we're waiting to see what happens the next year when the tests start to norm out at that computer-based thing in the next generation, as far as scores go. So that being said, we're solid in the middle. A couple of things to make note of come in the areas of math and English specifically. Math, our student growth was a little below the state average. We were at 44.7 while the state average was 49.7, and, but our students, 55% were meeting or exceeding expectations, which fell just below the state, and those are the new designations. We moved to those new categories of ranking, which is where they had to scale the scores over from. So while we're a little below the state there on the new categories, we were looking at how we, how we deliver instruction in the classroom, because right now, we deliver math in a conceptual-based way, which is to say how students can take math, see what they need to use, decide what they need to use, design it, and implement it, where the state test we're finding is more of a concrete mechanical application-based type thing. So there's a little disconnect there. So we're looking at how to remediate those mechanical skills moving forward, but still keep that conceptual-based application piece so that it's more useful once they get outside of the classroom. As far as English goes, English, we saw the most growth in. The student growth was at 60.2 while the state average was 49.4, and a lot of that, I think, can be attributed to some of the things we're doing as far as notice and note. You heard Bill mention that before me. It's a close reading strategy and actually has a lot of different applications. They're doing it in the middle school, they're starting at the middle school, and actually, they're running a professional development with the rest of the faculty, notice and note for nonfiction, because that will help students in science access to texts and get better information out of the texts, and in social studies as well, and even in math. So we're implementing that, and then we're also, for the ninth grader specifically, they're focusing on text integration so that when they do test in the following year, they're good at accessing those texts that they're reading and integrating what they've read into the test answers when they're doing that. So the other piece to note in the English is that we're adjusting our curriculum to go after specific areas of weakness, because while we're at 60.2, obviously, there's still room for growth. So we looked at some of the things, and some areas are analyzing an argument and making inferences, author's point of view, and things like that. So these are things that we're just going to adjust the curriculum to make sure where we're at. Science moves to the computer-based testing this year. So once all these tests go through for a year and we get some normed numbers, we can really look at the areas that are sticking out as needing improvement and then move towards that.
Any questions for Principal Jones? Fred?
Just out of curiosity, by doing PARK testing the past few years, was that helpful now that we're seeing computer-based in the high school?
I think it's always helpful to get a look at it first, and those first few years are held harmless because it's taking the chance so you don't have any negative consequences. So I think, I think that did help, is a short answer.
If I could follow up, just from the administration of the test by taking PARK greatly helped the principals, assistant principals, curriculum directors, and all of that, because as Pearson had PARK, Pearson now plays a role in this, and the system of importing the student data, of looking at accommodations and student needs moved to online much earlier because we adopted PARK. So when it comes to the administrivia of the test, along with the collection of materials and all of that, it did pave the way for that. Maybe not necessarily in the scores that students receive, but it did pave a way in the administration, which made it much easier.
Just sort of reaffirming my head, that's all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
And I would ask that the committee, if they have any, if you're looking for anything, if you go into Edwin, there's over 600 reports that not everybody has access to in Edwin about scores. But if there's something that you feel you'd like, if there's something that you want, if you just want to email me, give me a call, I can sit down with you, because it is a, it is a long process that you go through, but it does pay dividends if there's something that you need.
We didn't want to publicly put numbers on a screen for the committee because they're detailed, and it would take a full meeting to explain and drill down to some of the categories of the MCAS assessment. The one thing I think challenging at the high school is the lack of hardware to implement computer-based testing. The high school is one of the few buildings in this, in the district that doesn't have a PTO that fundraises for equipment. So implementing computer-based testing for sophomores and freshmen over time, two different experiences, takes almost every available Chromebook out of the classroom because there's not enough per classroom to put it to, for the implementation of the test. That's something we need to address as we move forward, as we want to go forward with making sure technology is available for every student in every classroom.
And just to remind everyone, that was a cut last year in our budget. Last year was to be the second year of the lease that we had for Chromebooks, and last year's was for secondary and high school purposes, and that was, that did not make it through the end of the budget.
Just to give you an idea for when you're talking about assessment with now that we're computer-based testing, for each day of the assessment, the rest of the school loses all their computers, because we have to, we have to take those for all the different testing situations that we have to have and move those to the students that are taking the tests. So during that timeframe, any other things with computers, any other lessons with computers, anything technology-based is a no-go for every testing day that we have.
Anyone else? Dan?
Out of all the, can we get numbers on what we have for computers and what we're supposed to have for these tests?
Sure, sure.
Sort of shuffling around all the time and...
We'd ideally like to have a classroom set for every teacher, so a classroom set of 25 per, for every teacher. Not necessarily a one-to-one that a student carries back and forth, but a set in a cart that stays in the classroom. So right now, you probably have 230, 200 to 250 machines in the building, and that's not a classroom set for every teacher.
We have those numbers because two years ago, when we first went through the lease, at that time, the tech director brought those forward to say what we had at the time and then what we purchased and where we would be at. So we can get those in the minutes for you. That's no problem.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Any questions for Jeff or George? Will we move forward? Go ahead.
Thanks. So last year, when I sat and delivered my goals to the committee, the committee looked at the template and said, "It's a little cumbersome, and you'd like to see something a little bit simpler and more measurable." So as a handout today, Michelle gave you my goals for this year. I have four goals that we will be working on as a team, but specific to moving the district forward, that I believe are measurable this year and will put us in a good spot if all goes well. The first goal is to update our current strategic plan for the next three years. I'll use the current template of the pillars, but we're adding a pillar this year. So pillar one will be social, emotional learning. Pillar two will be curriculum and instruction. Pillar three is operations, and that includes facilities, technology, and safety, security, and transportation. And pillar four is engagement. So part of, part of that strategic plan, I will also solicit information from our school community, our parent community, school committee, and I'll do that in a variety of ways as far as a survey, and I like to just have conversations with folks as they go to see what the two towns want to do or want me to put forth in a strategic plan over the next three years. We had talked about, George and I, a little bit about moving into a five-year plan. I think the way things are shifting in our, in our culture and technology going out five years, we're not there yet. I'd like to set it at a three-year plan utilizing those four pillars. So that's goal number one. Goal number two comes under what we're going to discuss, and we've been discussing for the last six months, is the regional agreement and budgeting. So one of my goals, goal two, would be working with the school committee and, if established, the regional agreement committee to modify if needed the current regional agreement. I know we had talked in September about a regional agreement committee. I think tonight, we're going to move forward with that conversation. In doing that, preparing a fiscal 2021 budget using either the statutory method of assessment or the agreement model of assessment, that's to be determined, but I'm letting you know that I will prepare that budget based upon whatever, whatever is given to me as the assessment. And then advocate for a budget that will enhance the learning opportunities of our students while continuing to support the, to support students' growing social, emotional needs. As George mentioned, our cuts of technology last year, we cut $890,000 worth of staff. We used quite a bit of E and D money, and we put back $292,000 to make a budget that we could, we could get forth, and that was an eight and a half percent increase. We're going to be asking for money again this year for, and that's part of goal number three, as far as an ELA curriculum. You heard all the principals talked about the middle, so I've been sitting here since 2010, and we've been in the middle. George has been here since 2005, four? We've been in the middle. What we've, what we've seen as that middle is a lack of foundation blocks in program and instruction, instructional delivery in the ELA. Uh, you heard all the principals talked about the middle. So I've been sitting here since two thousand and ten and we've been in the middle. George has been here since two thousand and five, four? We've been in the middle. What we've, what we've seen as that middle is a lack of foundation blocks in program and instruction, instructional delivery in the elementarys. I think the middle and the high, um, have stayed, so to speak, in the middle because we haven't had that solid elementary structure. The math program that we put in, so far, is meeting to rave reviews from staff and from, hopefully from students. The ELA program, that's goal number three, is to preview and pilot a K-ten-five elementary English arts program, establish a method of paying for this. Currently, we have, uh, a Houghton-Mifflin program, Intro to Reading is one of our pilots, and a Pearson, Pearson program, my view, as the two pilots. Just roughly, the math program, after we were able to work out a, a pretty positive deal with iReady, the math program for six years cost us a little over three-hundred-thousand dollars. The English pilot programs are ranging between two-sixty-five and two-ninety for six years. So an investment of fifty thousand dollars a year for elementary math for the next six years, I think, is, is moderate for the needs of our students and the same for the English, for the English program. So we're going to establish that piece. And with that curriculum and instruction under goal three, once we establish that elementary curriculum, our goal, my goal, George's goal, is to put us on a curriculum cycle. The next curriculum we're going to look at is, is science. We haven't had a method of funding these programs and they've been cut. And I think you heard from the principals that our scores are not terrible. I think our teachers do a great job and we have a great student body with great parent support. But our scores are, are marginal and in the middle compared to the state. We should be doing better. And goal number four is operations, and again, that includes facilities, technology and safety. Utilize the technology needs assessment that we're in the process of, as, as I speak, that report to make recommendations for improvements with hardware, software and with personnel. If accepted by MSBA, move forward with the creation, uh, and working with the town of Whitman on a feasibility study for our new Whitman Middle School. And then provide ALIS training to new staff and year-two training for other staff. And also this year is to provide information, as was asked last year, to parents and age-appropriate presentations to students. That'll be part of, of goal number four. I think each of those goals will put us in a good spot by May or June of, of, of twenty-twenty. I think they're all measurable and you'll, you should see some results as, as we move forward, um, at the end of the year, if, if I can get this through.
Any questions?
Anyone have any questions for superintendent? Again, as a committee, if you have any questions of any of the superintendent's goals as he marches on, do not, as he's told you, he isn't open to a policy, do not hesitate to call him and ask him about anything that you think you have any questions about. That's, everything is about communication and good communication provides much better thinking as we move forward. No questions? Okay. All right. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Unfinished business, regional agreement amendment committee. As you know, we've discussed this a week ago, and that's why, uh, we, we kind of took a week. Does anyone, um, we, we had discussed the structure of this committee, and I know that that two or three meetings ago, when this structure was based, it had twenty-odd people on it, and twenty-odd people is like way, way, way too many, we'll never get anything done. As we move forward to amend what goes on and talk about assessments, part of it is that the agreement pretty much only needs a couple of tweaks here and there, but they're big tweaks. So, uh, yeah, does anyone have any thought process on how we should structure the regional agreement committee with less people? Fred?
As far as the portion goes to address the way we make our assessment...
Let's do the committee first, if we can.
Well, but if the committee, if, if that's what we're forming a committee to do, I don't know that it's the school committee's charge or necessi-, I think you're getting too many people in a room and too many chefs trying to make a stew, that that should be between the two towns. And let the two boards of selectmen and perhaps FinComs have a dialogue and see if they can make headway, if we're looking for them to make some sort of an agreement or whatnot. If it's up to me, I'm looking at it and I'm saying, based on the facts I know, statutory is the way I feel is a fair method. That's my headset. But if other people look at things, and I'm talking about our town fathers, that answer to our taxpayers, and they want to try and work together with the other town in the spirit of community to see if there's some give and take or something that can be done, and maybe there is and maybe there isn't, you know, perhaps we delay for a month and ask them if they can come up with a solution. And if not, then perhaps it comes back to us and we form a committee and we go forth from there. Uh, but I don't think that, I think it's our portion to make sure we have a budget. And now that we have the information on the different ways of making an assessment, that we, we have an obligation to the taxpayer to make sure they're aware of what they're voting for. And when we vote our budget at that point in time, if there's nothing done to perhaps put something forward. But if our hope and aspiration is for two towns to talk, let's give the two towns the opportunity to talk. They're the ones that are going to be making the ultimate decisions, not us.
Okay.
That's my feeling.
Chris?
So I think a really thin committee in terms of school committee membership, maybe one from each town, or if we wanted to, chair, vice chair, two selectmen, and then I think they should meet weekly, starting next week to get it done. Because I think we continue to have conversations about what we need to do. I think whether it's the school district, whether it's the town of Whitman, whether it's the town of Hanson, there is significant impact to whatever is decided here. So I think we just need to rip the Band-Aid off, get people in a room, get it figured out, one way or another, and get it done.
Dawn?
I would agree with Chris, that school committee should be involved in some capacity. Christine Lynch mentioned to that point, that school committee should work with each town. So I think it involves all three entities in some capacity.
Okay. Ellie?
Oh, I, I agree with exactly what Chris says. We need, we need to get everybody in the room.
You agree with Dawn?
Yeah, Dawn and Chris, yeah.
I mean, I was having a little trouble here.
And Bob, I, so I may add one more thing. So ultimately, if I understand the process correctly, as soon as it's done, it has to come back to the full school committee anyways. So it's open meetings, everyone can attend, and the school committee still has to vote it, thumbs up, thumbs down, anyway. So there is still, uh, there's a process to participate in terms of it's all open meetings and ultimately, we all have to vote it one way or another anyway. So I don't think we get excluded from the process, but I think, to Fred's point, we've got to get a couple of selectmen, you know, finance committees, town administrators, whoever needs to be involved. It's, I think we now know all the facts. It's just time to come together and decide what we need to.
Fred?
And that's all well and good, and we can have school committee members, but ultimately, I believe it's up to the two towns to, they're going to be the ones that need to, you know, push something forward and make an agreement. What I would be thinking is we give them a deadline. You know, when's our meeting next month? Get back to us if they have to meet every third day or whatever. You know, to sit in a room and try and, either something's going to give or something isn't going to give. And going at it with the full knowledge, at least in my mind, that if there is no agreement, it's going to end up being statutory no matter what. Because one town, whichever way this committee votes, one town's going to approve a budget and the other town's going to not approve a budget. And then it's going to end up at the super-district meeting or the district-wide meeting. And then if that budget doesn't get done, then we end up having to go with the state's one-twelfth until we get something done, you know, which I don't think anybody wants. And then you have the second elephant in the room, and that is the ever-increasing school budget and what our needs are, which, uh, obviously our needs are great. And at this point, this is what affects the kids in our town educationally, because they have needs. And we have to, we should be fulfilling their needs. And unfortunately, there's no way, I mean, you look at what our budget is and you look at how quickly our budget grows and you look at what our revenues are, and it's realistically impossible to keep up with the growth of the district with two towns when so much of your monies come from a source that is only increasing at less than a half a percent a year. And I was, I don't know what the answer is. And, you know, we would have to, uh, you know, say a few hail Marys or whatever, but it's, uh, quite frustrating.
Chris?
I agree with Chris and Dawn, um, a couple of reasons. I see this kind of as the process we go through every year with the budget, where we put together a budget and then we bring it to the towns and they ultimately decide on it. And add to that the need to get this going as soon as possible. I think it's, uh, best if we start with the committee that we're, we're talking about and then, uh, you know, come back to the school committee.
This has come pretty much full swing in the last two months. Dan? First year in a hurry, now we're...
Well, I, I can see where Fred's going, but, um, unfortunately, we, we've been late and, uh, I don't think we can wait on other entities anymore. We should have been doing this two months ago, having this regional agreement done. In a room already, we still haven't really met in a room yet. So, you know, um, we can't wait around anymore. We, like Chris and everybody's saying, we have to get this done. The budget season's coming up too quick, and the way this always works in the towns, down the road, down the road, down the road, miss, then it puts us further and further behind the eight ball. We can't do, we can't play that game anymore. We have to take charge, go forward, get this done, get it out there. Otherwise, I, I see us going to that one-twelve system and then our school systems are going to be so far behind, um, because they won't get us what we need. That's just the state. So, you know, we, we, whatever it has to do, we have to get it done and get it done quickly, because I don't think we can afford the time anymore. Would be nice to have them go in the rooms and figure this out in a week or two. I don't see it happening, though.
I have, okay, go ahead, Dawn, because I have two, uh, select persons here that are probably going to give us some input.
My response to Chris Howard and agreeing with him, just to add on to that, is because we heard from a lot of Whitman members last meeting. I haven't heard from the Hanson side, and I would like to hear, um, Hanson, FinCom, and that's my reason for saying, all three entities need to come together. It's what Christine Lynch had said, school committee, work with both your member towns to come together, work together on this. Part of that, I want to mention, we haven't had a chance to talk about the Mass Association of Regional Schools reports, MARS. They gave us member town reports of both Whitman and Hanson. I think as a school committee, um, we have a lot of information in here ourselves that we can look at both of our towns, and that's what this was meant for, to try to get a good grasp of our school budget and where our towns are at. Some of these numbers I read from the report, um, fiscal year nineteen, and as the superintendent had said, we just cut nine-hundred-thousand dollars, lost positions last year. But these reports tell us about our towns, combined last year, there was an excess levy amount of six-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. So that's taxable revenue that was not collected. It talks about free cash and stabilization amounts. Both towns have healthy balances. Whitman combined is three-point-six million and Hanson, two-point-six million. I'm not saying what they should do with that, I'm just saying that these reports tell us information about the towns. Educationally, a percent of the town's budget spent on state average is forty-seven percent from a town. Whitman spends forty-six percent of their budget on education and Hanson forty-four percent. We can talk about target share too, where you should be. Chapter seventy reports say, "We're not at target share yet." Both towns have not met that. So we're below average and just like our scores are at average. I'd love to get some school committee members together with board of selectmen, with FinCom, and figure out how we can finally get ahead of the game. And not only determine this assessment method, but how we're going to keep these curriculum programs funded, how we're going to look ahead.
Randy? Laura? Thank you both for coming.
Randy Lamatina, Whitman Board of Selectmen. Good news, the Band-Aid has been ripped off. We did have a preliminary meeting, a couple of Whitman selectmen, town administrator from Whitman and Hanson, and two Hanson selectmen. Very informal. I will describe the dialogue as quality and respectful. I would not say we came to any conclusion, but I think we were very cognizant of each other's concerns. The door is open. I think Whitman is firm on its position. We fear the sta-, we feel the statutory method is the fairest equitable way to make sure that our state aid is going to the kids, the reason why we get that portion of state aid. And that's why we, we've kind of pushed this issue. I think we also clarified our position that we're, we're very strong supporters of this region. We know Hanson has been a good partner. We will try to work through it, but I think one of the issues that really came out is we, neither town is going to back into this. I think we need to see the school budget. And that's where I would like to see the school committee working on. I, I want to see these things. I, I want to see what programs you're going to be, bring back. I want to see what this is going to cost us, because we cannot come formulate a plan with an unknown number. I would like to see school committee involved in this process, absolutely, but at the end of the day, it's the selectmen that are going to the taxpayers to say the check that we need to have cut. So I think the school committee as a whole should really stick with formulating a budget. Where is the school going to go? The assessment issue, I think, will be in the hands of the selectmen. Obviously, you need to choose a, a method. I think as we stand here right now, we know if it's option A, Hanson votes one way, it's option B, Whitman votes another way. I don't know if we're going to come to a, you know, a great kumbaya agreement. I, I do think we can get there, but we need to know where, you know, where ultimately we need to be, which at the end of the day is your budget.
Thank you. Any questions for Randy? Laura?
So as Randy mentioned, we met last night, and I guess, um, I, I see things similar to, and I have to say, this is probably the only thing I've agreed with you lately on Fred, but, um, but I do think that it ultimately will play out where the state's going to take over. And we know, uh, each side has sort of picked its weapons and we've got the position, right? I mean, Hanson takes the position, "We've got an agreement." And it seems quite ungentlemanly to say, "Screw the agreement. Uh, we, we, we want to just throw that out and go statutory." But we had a good meeting last night, you know, and we understand where Whitman's coming at. If I, if it was Hanson in that same position, I'd, and I am doing this for Hanson, I'd be doing what's in the best interest for the citizens of Hanson. And I think that the guys from Whitman are trying to do the same thing. In the end, I think we also are cognizant of the fact that while we're trying to do what's best for the citizens in our respective towns, we don't want to see the schools harmed in the process. But I guess what I would ask from you is we need transparent, transparency and clarity. Specifically, we need clarity on numbers that Mary has asked, um, for the school district to provide. And, and I emphasize this because we really cannot sit down at a table and figure out a path forward if we don't have the facts and we don't have the facts right now. We don't know how, we, we have the MARS stuff that's telling us revenue and what the town has got for revenue, but I don't have anything in front of me that's saying, "The schools in Hanson cost this much to operate. Here's what the teachers for Hanson are costing the district. Here's what the special education costs are for Hanson." I need that information. It, it would be bananas for us to sit down and try to figure out any kind of an agreement if we don't have those numbers. We just can't do it. It's like, it's literally like working in the dark. So I think what you've got here is two boards of selectmen that are committed to trying to work together, um, understanding that that probably means neither town is going to be happy if we do come up with some agreement. It's like a little bit of pain for everybody, possibly, if, if we look at like a transitional type of thing or whatever. We haven't really even gotten into any details, because we really can't without the facts. So what we really need from you guys, and when I'm, I'm prevailing upon you to please get to us as, as soon as you possibly can, is those facts, so that we can sit down and in earnest, do what we want to do, which is try to look at this and see if there's an equitable way for us to move forward. And, and I, and I think that's all that any- And I think that's all that anybody could expect from us, and we're willing to do that. And again, I, we haven't each talked to our full respective boards, but it was two, you know, Selectmen from each board and our Town Administrator and and I think, you know, when we each have our meetings on Tuesday night, I feel quite hopeful that people are going to say, yes, we'd like to try to to see if there's a way forward. What I couldn't do is live with myself if we didn't try. I can't promise anything. Like Randy said, we don't know what's going to happen and, you know, we may go through this whole entire exercise and then ultimately, right, it's the taxpayers who decide. It's the voters who decide, the people that show up at town meeting. And we may come up with a fantastic plan and they may say, guess what, we don't think it's so fantastic and we're not voting for it. But I can't live with myself if we don't at least try to open up the dialogue and have the conversation. And so that's where we're at. Thank you for listening and for all of the efforts that you guys are putting in and it's gratifying to see that I think in a sense, some karma heads are prevailing and maybe we're all starting to see that we're in this boat together. We've got to figure out how to, you know, keep rowing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Wait a minute, Fred. Having said that, Michelle, when's our next meeting? How long would it take you to get all of these budget numbers that you just heard together for next year's budget? Because I'm hearing, I agree with Dawn and Chris, and I also kind of agree with Fred and after hearing from both Selectmen, without numbers, steadfast numbers that are going to vary a little bit as we move forward because we're not sure about state, what's coming. But I'm pretty sure we have a contract, we can figure out what that is.
We can get you, we can get you a preliminary in-depth or a preliminary budget based upon our contractual expenses, based upon the new curriculum that we're going to choose, based upon some of these things by December. We did that for FinCom for Whitman last year. So we can do that for December again. I don't want to set it in stone. You know, I, because that will depend upon state aid or chapter 70 money and things like that. But we can, we can do it. We can absolutely do it. We are short-staffed, but we'll put something together so that both, both boards of Selectmen. We are working on what Ms. Kement asked about, the Board of Selectmen asked us for a list of specifics to provide them as far as Hanson schools. I would caution that teacher salaries range differently, so I could have a very inexpensive Indian Head School and a very expensive Connolly School based upon where people are on the seniority list and steps and lanes. So we have to take that into consideration. If I have younger staff at one school and older staff at another, we're still providing the same service except their salaries might be different. But we can put all those things together by the 11th. If that's, if that's what the committee needs to move this forward, we absolutely can do that.
Fred?
Well, I just want to add a couple of things. One, there's a lot of misinformation that's being tossed around, you know, between the internet, social media, et cetera. There's no such thing as a wealth-based method. There is statutory method or what's called the alternative method slash agreement method, which is a different method other than the statutory. But there is no such thing as a wealth-based method. That's a fantasy. What we're actually talking about is the elimination of monies that are directed from one town to the other when it comes to the statutory compared to the agreement. You know, and by no means am I advocating or saying, you know, this should be done, but if we were two separate towns, the monies that we're talking about would be Whitman's monies just going to Whitman because they're part of Whitman's chapter 70 funds. And the statutory was the only method to do back in 1993. And then it was, I think Christine Lynch had mentioned, it was 95 and 96 that they put an amendment in that you could do an alternative method. So I would just caution people to please don't listen or read everything you read online. It's not 100% accurate and sometimes doesn't tell the complete picture. And I just wanted to make sure I, for myself, I feel better saying that.
Thank you. Ellie?
I just want to make sure I heard that the towns want a budget of everything that we need, correct?
They want our budget for FY '21.
With everything that we need. So put in full DAK, everything and everyone that we lost last year in a full fleet of Chromebooks for every single classroom. That's what we need.
Laura, come on up.
I appreciate your zeal to get us what we've asked for. We're not asking for next year's budget. Obviously, you guys are going to have to get that together. What we're asking for is right now, right here, today. You know, yeah, what does it cost? That's what we're looking for. Not what did you want, what did you not get, what are you looking for next year, what the budget is next year. We're not interested in any of that right now. We're looking at where we're at right now, meeting you where you're at right now with what, how the money is being spent right now. That's really what we're looking for.
And that's what Mary is very specific.
I just, I was hearing a different dialogue, so I just wanted to...
I heard two different things.
All right, awesome. Thanks.
Randy, I couldn't see you from sitting down here. Is that what you're looking for too? I want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Well, I think Whitman comes at this in a little bit different avenue. As we think, if we go statutory, obviously, we'd have to make some type of concession to ease Hanson into this. That concession can only come if we know what the ultimate number is going to be. We got to make sure we weren't shorting ourselves or if that was the case. So, yes, obviously Hanson needs their information, but we need a budget. We need, obviously Whitman also, on another hand, is doing, we have an override evaluation committee going. That's not going to string out until May. We need a budget. And this kind of goes along with what Dawn was saying.
So it sounds, so Hanson wants today's costs and Whitman wants next year's budget. I mean, I'm just trying to take notes, that's all.
Yes. Well, I think we're looking at two different things.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
On Whitman's end, we feel if we're going to go statutory, which is what we stand firm on, if we're going to try and help Hanson at that point, we need to know what, where we need to get.
I don't disagree with either.
And I would say we need a realistic budget.
Dan?
That's what I'm hearing. Hanson wants to know where every penny is in this school this year.
For Hanson schools.
For Hanson schools. And Whitman needs to have not just next year, down the line, so they can project how to fund the schools properly. So we've got two different things, but they both have to be met for these guys to get in a room and start going through. Like Randy's saying, how are we going to try to fish it through? So we've got two different objectives there that need to be met to get this going.
Fred?
The elephant in the room is the sustainability of the school budget and the wide swings that we have and what the town's resources are and what's available for our revenues. I mean, with the Student Opportunity Act, I think we know our revenues are going to be based on $30 per pupil minimum. We see a slight uptick as far as regional transportation, but nothing substantial. I mean, look at the House Ways and Means or the Joint Session of Ways and Means right now. They have the FY '19, not '20, '19 supplemental budget, which would give us more money for regional transportation. And the House had one number, I think they were 2.6 million. The Senate said, oh, no, we're going to do 5.2 million. I mean, it's decent money for us. It's important money for us. So now it goes into a conference committee for them to decide what number they're going to end up being. And then, well, we'll split it up, half this year, half next year. So half for '19, even though it's a '19 appropriation, and then you'll see the other half for FY '20. Well, they're stuck in committee. They can't make an agreement and they go out on recess this week. So if they don't come out and figure something out, who knows what happens to that money or if we'll ever even see it. So that's what we've got going on. That's what we've got dealing with. And if I sound like bitter apples, I'm sorry because I am. So when half of our monies come, you know, $25 million comes from the state and they're only increasing their revenue by a half a percent, our towns can only pay so much. They only have so much revenue. So that's the other...
Fred, that's always been the difficulty in trying to start a budget in December. We don't know where the state is going to end up.
We can have a good idea.
Jane Durante from Hanson, Harvey Circle. I haven't come to any meetings on this. All I do is read the papers. I'm not a social media freak, so I don't go by that. What I'm going by and what I'm hearing is there seems to be people that want to rush and have this committee make a decision on a different way to fund the budget. I think what Chairman of our Selectmen in Hanson, she sounds very logical to me as a person sitting here. The here and now, that's what she wants and that's what she wants to see and that's what people will want to see. Now, we've had the same funding for how many years? I worked in the schools since '81 up until 2012, so we never had an issue. We went by the percentage now, whatever they're calling that. I couldn't quote it, but I understand Whitman's in a crisis. I read the paper, I hear they, you know. Is this a way to go? When our assessment in Hanson, and correct me if I'm wrong, may go up to over a million dollars.
That's correct.
Okay, so, I mean, that's a lot of money to swallow. And I don't know. I mean, I hear people say, oh, they think that we're rich in Hanson. I don't know if they think that. I really don't. But all I know is fear is fear. And I think what the chairperson, Mrs. Kement, has asked this committee, why are we going to rush into something? Let's get the facts, the here and now, what it's costing Hanson, Whitman, and look at it and figure it out. She want to ask a question? I don't care.
It's not a question. I just want to point out that everybody, I keep hearing that Hanson wants to know how much it costs for Hanson. This is Whitman-Hanson. We don't differentiate between Whitman students and Hanson students. So we don't look at the budget and go, this is how much it costs to run Hanson's.
I worked in the district. We never did that.
Right.
We never differentiated between Hanson and Whitman.
How would you get numbers saying this is just Hanson? There is no just...
Well, we have to look at, as you people, Whitman representative?
Yes.
As you were doing in your town, on looking at your financial situation and what can we do to make it better, okay? Well, we have to do the same thing in Hanson and I don't think it's unrealistic for what Mrs. Kement has asked. And I don't think we should rush in. I think it's what the people. Yes, oh, you're in agreement on the Board of Selectmen, Whitman unanimous, that you want the alternative. Well, let us get what information we need. I would want the alternative too, if I was going to get a million dollars that I don't have to pay. That, I'm not accusing anything, I'm not saying anything, but let's be fair about it and let's just get the here and now information that Mrs. Kement has asked for. And no rushing into this.
Thank you. Chris?
So I'd like to clarify my comments in terms of the rush. I think we need to rush into the dialogue. So I'm not saying we rush into a decision, but I think we need to rush to come together. So the whole conversation that I'm now hearing, I think there would be value in having the Selectmen together and the school committee, some representation together to do this transparency, transparently. One of the issues we've already seen, and I think both, both towns are making very valid points. That's great information. I would ask the same question, why not? But my concern is if we give some folks in some town some information and some folks in another town other information, I'm just very concerned about, and it's not the folks that are here, it's the folks that aren't here selectively picking and choosing certain data points to make certain arguments. So I think there's value in people coming together as a group united to say, we have to figure something out sooner rather than later, but let's do it in a session that's very transparent. Everyone can see everything. So completely respect your point. You might say, hey, I don't, I don't really necessarily want to see the Hanson info or I don't understand how that would be provided. But sit in the room and see what they're providing so we can kind of understand what's being looked at and so on and so forth on both sides. So I think this whole conversation brings me back to, I really think we need a regional agreement subcommittee sooner rather than later to have a good informed discussion to come together and seek a resolution.
Frank? Frank's been very patient.
The simplest way I can respond to what was said before, and for the sake of people who don't understand what the statutory method involves, it's like Thanksgiving. You have two pies. You have an apple pie and you have a pumpkin pie. One pie, which is the state, provides money in a certain way for each town. The other pie is the region which has to merge all that together. So the simple explanation is when the state gives money, it allocates money based on community needs. Then that's merged in the budget and that's what we're not doing now. And I'm not going to stand here and debate the value of statutory versus contract. What I want to say, and since I don't know any delicate way to say this, I'm going to be indelicate. I understand what was requested earlier, which was costs by community and by building. And I get the reason for that. And I actually think that it has some methodology to allow us to better dig into the budget. Each year, you present us with a budget, you give us summaries and totals, we review it and then we vote on it. What I think is being said, and someone will correct me if I'm wrong, is we want to get deeper into the budget process. We want to understand what the costs are individually and where they're coming from. So I think there's validity in saying, show us your separated costs, how much it costs to run the Hanson Middle School, how much it costs to run the Whitman Middle School. And right now, I'm talking about operational expenses. Salaries are a different story, but they can also be allocated based on what's in place and it's not a perfect formula. But we're trying to get a sense of where we're going. And the only way to know that is to look at where we've been recently. So to qualify the request that Laura's making, I would say, generate expenditure reports for buildings and for the high school. Break them out by year, 2018, 2019, 2020. That gives us a three-year picture. Gives us a better ability to examine the budget and understand where those numbers are coming from. Because as long as we keep handing out spreadsheets that show 20 million here, 30 million here, no one really understands it. And I agree with Laura, that will be helpful to getting a basic understanding. And then the second element is where are we going? What's sustainable and how do we get there? We need to identify in a more in more detailed terms, what we're looking at for '21. Budget for '20 is set. No matter what happens, that number's fixed. If there's a variance, you're going to go into YND to either fund it or YND is going to get credited at the end of the year. So if we have the history for '18 and '19 and you look at that on a three-year basis and then look forward, we can at least understand how that budget builds. It's not enough to say we grow 3% or 4% or 5% a year. Where are those numbers? And they're all important. Insurance is important. Health insurance is important. Salary and other salary expenditures is important. Because, because somebody gets a salary of $102,000, doesn't mean that's what they're going to be paid this year. What's the total cost? What are those other costs that we're paying in either contributions to 403Bs? What are those other costs that we're paying in either contributions to 403Bs, allowances for expenditures, credit for life insurance, things like that? That's all part of the cost, but it's not reflected in the salary. We detail that information at a townwide level, and we're looking for that detail at a regional level, so we can understand the budget. I don't know how to put it more simply than that.
Jeff, this question you before we get to Chris. Is this something doable? I mean, can you break it out? I don't see, I know it's going to be a ton of work, but I mean, it is, both sides have brought up some valid points.
As George just said, do we have a choice?
We'll figure it out.
And we'll figure it out. We're smart, and we'll figure it out. And I would say, some of that information is in FY18's budget book and FY19's budget book as a building-by-building breakdown of supplies and things like that. We've done that in the past. We moved away from that because it was too cumbersome. Last year, we can go back to that. We can break it down. The only issue that I think, just being not a math accounting guy, is the insurance piece as we go. But anything this committee needs us to do, we'll nose to the grindstone, we'll figure it out. We'll put it together, and we'll have it for the next meeting and get it to the towns. What I think, I think going back to, as I've heard different things now about the regional agreement and this committee, my concern is that I'm going to have to submit something to the Commissioner, because we have a standing agreement right now. And if we're looking at changing the funding methodology, that has to be voted by the towns. I know the Selectmen, if we work out whatever, but without approval of the school committee, and then the towns and the Commissioner, whether changing the funding source, I don't know if that's legal. We had our attorney here last time, nobody talked about making these arrangements. We talked about putting a committee together, we talked about including both communities, working together, then putting it to the school committee, then to a town meeting, and then to the Commissioner. And that's why the rush, so to speak, of forming a committee and getting some of this done, because what I don't want to do is go into May and having misinformation and having one town vote down the, what we've done or what the select people have done, and we enter into that Commissioner's thing in July. So I'd like to, I love the fact that the towns are communicating, I think that's awesome. But I want to make sure we also have a committee in place to then maybe work together with the, this group of Selectmen and the Selectmen that are on this committee, to make sure it's formed legally, and then we can get this done and passed at a town meeting in February or March, and to the Commissioner's desk by April, or if not sooner. That's my concern right now, as I heard all of this. I think it's wonderful that the communities are working together. That's better than it was in September. So this is good, maybe a little bit of time was good, cooler heads, as a few people have said. But I also look at what we have in place and the law of what Andy said last week and what Christine said, we need to make sure we have something on the Commissioner's desk. And she said, it's not going to take long, we don't have a lot of things, we could actually just take a part of that agreement, you know, and do things. So I think what some of the members of the committee said is, forming that committee, getting that in place, and then people can work together, and both towns can have ultimate transparency. We'll work on what Mr. Lyman said, we'll work on what Ms. Kimmitt said, we'll work on a budget for 2021. I think the 2021 budget projections are going to be not as detailed as we present in February, but we'll put something together over the next month. We want to get this put to rest so that we can put something in place for you to see and to move our district forward for 2021.
Dan?
That's what I was trying to get earlier, you know, what Chris is saying and everybody, we have to get into that. We can't really, it's nice now, we find out they're getting together, you know, that's fine and dandy, get together, start doing that, but as a regional district, we're going to have to do this in like two phases. The first phase, like Chris, you know, we got to get in there and fix this, fix this, then vote that out as quick as we can, and then next year, go back and fix all the little tweaks that were supposed to be done previous to this. That's somewhat what we're looking here. We're not going to get that whole regional agreement done in a small timeframe, we have to do it in two phases. The important part is getting the budget piece fixed, so that we don't get messed up by the state going into a 112 and putting this school system way behind. You know, like Jeff's saying, let's get them their information, just like Frank was saying, you know, if they need to look at, you know, 18, 19, 19, 20, 20, 21, fine, let's get all that information, data dump it out, let everybody have it, but we still have to form this committee and get it going, because we're, these towns are awful at just kicking crap down the line, and then it's too late to do things. We're already late now, because we should have this done before February, so we can get it into May. And, you know, what, we're going to have two meetings, and then we're into the budget cycle. So expedition of this, get this done.
Real quick, Jeff, when you prepare, and I'm going to go into the assumptions that this would be something the towns perhaps could benefit from, can you also project revenues as well and project them separately? So what Chapter 70 funds are allocated to which town? So they're, you know, properly allocated?
Pretty easy. Okay. Chris, thank you for being patient. We've had a lot of input.
Going to mention one thing on the regional agreement. We had a committee last year, we went through and cleaned up a lot of those items that exist in the 1991 agreement that needed to be cleaned up. The only issues with that agreement, certainly something Hanson had passed, was the language around the funding. Unfortunately, I wasn't there that meeting, but it really should be a cut and paste from the DESI website, along with any agreement the two towns come up with. And there was a question about withdrawal from the district, the fact that there was no subject to arbitration, right? So the way that it read, and this was a problem for Whitman, was that one town could continue to say no forever, whether reasonable or not. And so my suggestion would be, to whatever committee is formed, is you use the one that was already struck. We already know that that's passed through the folks at DESI. They've already looked at many of those sections with no issues. If you try to amend the 1991 agreement, and we heard it from DESI last meeting, if there's anything wrong with that agreement that's in conflict with today's laws, you'll also have to go back and change that. So you're looking at changing the whole thing anyway. So my suggestion would be, take the template that we already have, pull out the two sections, focus on those two sections to make both towns happy, and go from there, and I think that'll help with the speed. My only other comment in terms to why we're rushing, since 1993, when education reform was passed, and since the state has been giving out Chapter 78 differently than they did in 1991, when our agreement was struck, aid from one town, in some years Hanson, and in some years Whitman, has been reallocated from one town to another. That's what not following the statutory method does. Since 2015, that is close to $4 million from the town of Whitman. So yes, Hanson is looking at $1 million this year, but since 2015, essentially, that number is $4 million. So as a taxpayer in the town of Whitman, yes, we are in a hurry. This was brought to the administration's attention in 2016. It was actually Bruce Young who forwarded me something that caught my attention, that allowed me to find it, so thank you very much, Bruce. Sure. In an email that you answered to Mike Jones during the override, you included a partial link to the document.
Okay, okay. Chris, talk to us.
And I found it. So thank you for that. And so, we are in a hurry. We are in a hurry, we can't wait any longer, it needs to be solved now. It has nothing to do with the way that costs are broken up, this is just about leaving the aid with the town that it's supposed to be with. Both methods take into account student population. The foundation budget used in the statutory method uses the number of students. It actually gets more detailed than the 60-40 split. It takes into account what grade level those students are in, and the cost to educate students at that grade level. It is a better method, and it is in line with the Education Reform Act, and it is in line with what the state did to meet its obligations. Our agreement dating back to 1991 does not do any of those things. It's really important that we get this solved.
Thank you. Anyone from the committee? Dawn?
Bob, if the two towns, Board of Selectmen come together, school committee, and come up with some type of amendment to the regional agreement, has to get voted at town meeting. So is that our May town meeting?
We, well, yeah, go ahead.
That's my question.
It could be, there could be a special town meeting.
Okay, so is that what we're striving towards, a special town meeting, to be scheduled for both towns?
It may end up that way. I mean, we can't say there's going to be a special town meeting, Dawn, because they haven't got together yet. That may never happen, and it may go to May on its own.
And then you've got almost two articles at the town meeting, one to vote this new regional agreement, and if it doesn't, then you've got a budget right behind it that is going to default to statutory. I'm just trying to.
That could happen.
Could happen.
Okay.
Or there may not be any new regional agreement.
Right.
And we just, but you may have an additional article, you may be voting method and budget.
That's correct.
At your town meeting.
Okay.
And we may stay with the same regional agreement and work on that afterwards. It's all going to come down to timing. Timing is everything, and part of it is, we're in the cycle right now, and we're forecasting what '21 is going to be, and that's always the effect that we get, as Mr. Small mentioned. When you have politicians that are allocating funding, and they break off and no one's sure what you're going to get, when it could affect you between a half a million dollars to a million dollars in a budget, that becomes a problem, especially when the numbers are set. And we talk about set numbers, but you don't get a set number until the governor's budget comes out, it gets voted, it gets approved, and they even, every year, they play around with the per pupil cost. One year where you were at, I think Josh and Senator Brady and Jeff Deal got $55 per pupil, and now it's back to 30. So I mean, when you say, how much is that? Well, just figure out what $25 is by the number of students we have. It's a hefty amount of money, so that does come into play. It always comes into play. Anyone else? Dawn?
I just wanted to follow up what Chris George was saying, as far as the per pupil. With the statutory method, it is still based per pupil, the number of students enrolled for Whitman and Hanson. So I looked back, if we had been doing statutory method in 2015, if you just take what Hanson's minimum contribution was at that time, and their enrollment, the cost of each of those students was $3,900. Whitman's at that time was $3,500. They were fairly close. Move ahead to 2020, right now, the budget we just had, if we had done it statutory, with the current enrollment for Hanson and Whitman, and you look at that minimum local contribution, the Hanson per pupil is 5,900, and Whitman is 4,700. It's just based on economics of the town, so the numbers just speak for themselves. It's not Hanson paying for Whitman students, it's just your ability to pay as a community, and it's that number that is assigned by DESI and the state for minimum local contribution by your enrollment still. It's just a higher dollar value, and it is for all other towns. In Selsho-Votech, we've talked about this before, the town of Hanson is paying a certain dollar amount for students to go to Selsho-Votech that is different from the dollar amount that Whitman pays for a Selsho-Votech student.
We've got, ma'am, we've got people waiting. You've got to wait, ma'am. We have people waiting.
You can go in the end of the line and do it.
I say, I'm sorry.
She took a deli number.
We're going to have to get a deli counter thing and take numbers pretty soon. Come on up there. Thank you, ma'am.
Amanda Rubens, Reed Street in Hanson. I want to first start with something good. As far as MCAS, my son came from a different school district. We moved into Hanson, and his growth rate was 88%. So that is huge, huge, just coming from another town. So that's great. The only thing I'm confused on is I hear one person saying it's about all the students, it's not like Whitman or Hanson, but then I also hear someone saying, you know, Chapter 70, Whitman money goes to Whitman students, and I don't understand how that works. Like, we're a region, so shouldn't all of it go to everybody? Not be like, I don't know, I guess I'm just confused at, like, what is being set? Because we said, you know, we look at the region as both everybody, but then I also hear, well, Chapter 70, Whitman students should go to Whitman. So I just, I guess I'm a little confused with that.
Mr. Small's got his hand up. You want to explain that, Dawn?
What the state does is they have a few different numbers. One is called the minimum local contribution. That is the amount that the state feels you can afford to spend based upon your town's demographics, not individual house values, et cetera, but the value of your town. Okay? And this is the state formula, not my formula, not Whitman's formula, the state's formula. So you have your minimum local contribution. Then supposedly, they backfill from that based upon the number of students you have to reach your foundation budget. That's the way it's supposed to work, that's your Chapter 78. Now, if you look at Whitman, the minimum local contribution for FY '20, let's see, $10,631,000 and change. The town of Whitman, to meet the assessment last year, spent $3,766,613 more than the required number in order to meet our school's assessment. Hanson's minimum local contribution was $8,892,401. Hanson spent $778,574 more than what was required to meet their assessment number. And, you know, each town's assessment increased by, I think it was eight and a half percent last year. So what the statutory method does is it takes away the Chapter 70 funding from the split of the monies, and it assigns it to the town in which it was originally calculated for. So that's how we get the disparity of that million dollars. If you follow what I'm saying.
It just kind of sounded like.
That part of the money doesn't all go into a pool. And I will say, yes, I read this online, and I can't take credit for this analogy, but it's like going out to dinner with somebody, and one person has a gift card to that restaurant. And they say, okay, well, the bill's X amount of dollars, but here's a gift card that I have, I'm taking that off of my portion of what I owe, because I have the gift card. And then puts in the balance of what they would owe, and everyone goes on their way. Or the other way that we've been doing it is, that gift card goes off the whole bill, and then you're splitting up the money. I guess that might be an easy way to say it. I wish, that's a perfect analogy in my head, you know, to be able to explain it.
So up until now?
Up until now.
The gift card was taken off the top.
Taken off the top.
In both towns.
In both towns, and.
And now we're changing it to.
Well.
We're not doing.
We're not, we're.
It could potentially change to.
We're potentially changing it.
Whitman has the gift card.
You know, through a manner of circumstances, the members of this committee, myself included, never realized there was more than one way to do a budget, and when we asked if we were doing it the statutory way, or when I asked, I was told, yes, we were, and we weren't.
Okay.
Okay? So the statutory method self-corrects year to year. We don't even know what the number's going to be for next year, because when DESI releases their numbers, that's when they release the wealth factors and the calculations and the foundation budgets and all those things to even equal out that, so that we would know what it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we've kicked this around for many meetings, and I'm going to let Mr. Young speak, and this nice young lady that's waiting also, but this information's been disseminated at many meetings, and we're reliving it again tonight, and we're not getting any further along as to where we're going to go with this. We're just rediscussing it. So after these two speakers, we're going to move forward and see what we're going to do, because we're. 'cause we're, we're really re-discussing it the same exact stuff we've gone over for the last three to four meetings. And back just before, Bruce, we talked about the couple budgets, what Mrs. Kemet wants-
I might know.
Broken down, special education costs for each town and all of the above. So, all of that can come out and come into play of what everything costs. And I heard that from both boards of selectmen, so that is good. Mr. Young.
I'll, I'll make this simple, and I've been through it before. Statutory versus, statutory versus the percentage of pupil method, which we've been using since 1992 and are still using. This is the, this is the simple difference, okay? The assessment to both towns in fiscal 2020 that the town's responsible for, that's the net operating cost. After you take the budget, subtract what you believe is coming in from the state and all other sources of revenue, and debt that the towns are responsible for, you come up with the assessment to both towns. That was twenty-four million, sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars to the two towns. Using the method that we've always used, okay? And broken down by the percentage of students from Whitman and the percentage of students from Hanson, forty point two percent for Hanson, fifty-nine point eight percent for Whitman, based entirely on the twenty-four million, okay? Comes out to nine point seven million for Hanson, fourteen million, point four million for Whitman. Simple, right? Take the statutory method, okay? If you take the statutory method, the figure that Mr. Small referred to as the minimum annual contribution, and that's prepared by the state, and the state takes the foundation enrollment, and to the foundation enrollment, they tweak it by the wealth of the community, certain factors regarding the wealth of the community. Income and valuation of property, and there's several other factors that are related to that. And after they do that, they come out to the minimum annual requirement of nineteen million, five hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine as the minimum annual contribution of the total of the two towns. And that breaks down to Hanson, eight million, eight point nine million, and Whitman, ten point six million. Now, figuring it on the statutory method, the state says, "Okay, you have to use those two figures as your first two calculations for figuring the statutory method." In that case, using the statutory method for those two figures, Hanson is not forty point two percent. But when you tweak it by that wealth-based factor, Hanson comes out to forty-five point four million, forty-five point five million. And Whitman comes not, is not fifty-nine point eight, but comes out to fifty-four point four. You following? Following me? Doesn't sound like a heck of a lot, another-
You have to add back in the chapter seventy-eight.
Yeah.
Start one at a time, guys. Please don't confuse it- Please speak to us. Please speak to the committee, Bruce.
Don't, don't confuse it with non-facts. That's a non-fact. Just keep following me. Five point, that's another five percent. Doesn't sound like too much. But when you apply that five percent to the nineteen point five million dollars, okay? What that does is it turns Hanson's contribution of forty point two percent, under the old method, into forty-four point five percent. And you go from nine point seven million dollars to, to ten point seven million dollars, another million dollars. And you reduce Whitman from fourteen point four down to thirteen point four. Why he's figuring all this chapter seventy state aid and backing it in, that, that, and I don't, I don't mean to sound harsh, but that is total absolute baloney, and I'm tired of hearing of it. When this, when this region-
Yeah, pour the water.
When this region gets state aid-
Do not point at this committee.
When, when this region gets state aid, okay? It doesn't get allocated to the towns or allocated to specific individual students within the town. It gets allocated to every student within both towns that are attending the school system. So, don't tell me that chapter seventy-eight gets reallocated back to both towns, 'cause it doesn't. Never has, never will.
Mr. Bush first.
It's a region, not two towns within a region.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Bush.
For three meetings, I didn't say anything because I see Jim in the back tonight, who was on the school committee, but before that was on the Hanson FinCom. And him and I shared almost parallel shifts. Bruce, you make me wanna think I wanna start a night class here on, how can there be so many people, officials in the Commonwealth, in DESI, all around the Commonwealth that have put thought and practice into this? And I can agree. I would almost support, I would support Hanson. But there has to be a point, and it's coming from a Republican, you have to have the ability to pay. I volunteered in both schools and never said this anywhere publicly, but I see differences with Whitman Kids and with Hanson. And I know where the needs really are. You can do that yourself. Spend a Friday afternoon or a Friday morning. You know, maybe that's not gonna win me any credits. I'm not here to win credits. But I listened for three meetings and had nothing to say. Mr. Young, I don't think you've been on our side at all. I know I got an email from your wife when I first won election. "Oh, a Republican got in. Thank goodness, we can..." No, that ain't it. It's still all of us. And I hope, Bruce, maybe for a moment you don't say anything or nod your head, and just think about these things. You've got a whole world out there to learn from. That's it.
Good, Mr. Bush, thank you. Mr. Small, and we're gonna move to the next speaker.
And I'm gonna be as brief as I can. And I wanna address Mr. Young, because what you're saying is absolutely, totally false, okay? The state has different formulas for Whitman and for Hanson. They have a different minimum local contribution for Whitman and for Hanson. The reason they have that is because there's different chapter seventy eights for Whitman and for Hanson. When you get up there and you say it doesn't exist, you are telling a falsehood. You are not telling the whole truth. You're not telling the truth, and you've done it far too often in this world. And I'm calling you out on it.
Okay, okay.
It's not the same pie. Then how come we have the numbers that they're different? And what did DESI say? They're different.
Thank you, both. Chris, go ahead, and this young lady's been waiting, so.
We can do this for the next seven months, and we can argue red and blue and just sit in corners.
It's red and black.
White and black, or whatever you want, red and black. Well, now, hold, stay with me. Stay with me, 'cause there's a reason I'm using red and blue. We gotta find the purple.
Yeah.
We gotta find the middle ground, right? This is, we can all make points, back and forth and back and forth. At the end of the day, we can make this super simple. We can either come together and both sides are gonna have to compromise, or we can just stop wasting each other's time, take this off the agenda, and just do a 112 budget.
Debate is healthy.
Excuse me?
Debate is healthy.
I think the debate is, I think the debate is-
Start.
To the point that there's reasonable debate. You know, we have people yelling back and forth. Come on, right? It's compromise. Can we find middle ground? That's debate. Debate towards a common end. Debate just for the sake of continuing the same, same thing over and over again is getting us nowhere.
I totally agree, Chris. And I think when the full number cost comes out, that may change some of this bickering and arguing. Because this has been going on for three or four or five meetings. Fred, I'm gonna hear from her and then, you got a sec?
I'm, I'm very quick, okay?
Quick, go ahead. 'Cause she's been so patient.
Yeah, and I, Chris, I agree with you, but at the same time, the public deserves to know the true answers to things. And when people are saying, stating falsehoods, I'm sorry, they need to be called out on them.
Thank you. I, thank you for your patience. This hasn't been an easy evening.
No, it hasn't for all of you. My, my name's Catherine Coakley, and I'm from Hanson. And I am here to say, clearly, you're all dedicated. A whole lot of work is happening, and the last thing you want to see occur is to this to go before the town meeting and voted down and all the consequences of that. I will tell you, I had no idea about this new change in the way we're gonna fund things and quite, was taken quite by surprise when I heard about it and went to the last Hanson meeting where we rescinded that vote rather overwhelmingly. So, I think that I'm just asking that the boards, all the boards, be very transparent on what you're doing. Somehow get the communication out better to the townspeople, 'cause they're not getting it. And to say, "Look at the website," isn't good enough, 'cause those of us who aren't computer savvy, website looking isn't the, the best of things. And so, you have to get the information out. And then if you do formulate this subcommittee, will we find out or know when that committee's meeting so some of us can go and attend and be informed, at least for ourselves, and to be able to communicate it to others? But I think you have to be far more transparent with, and I think you believe you have been, but I'm just telling you, most people didn't realize this was happening. So, I think that you don't wanna get it voted down, whatever conclusion you come to. So, I would encourage that to occur.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Jones.
Can we get on, back to that unfinished business of regional agreement amendment committee? Can we set that up tonight? Is there a downside to setting that committee up?
It's basically up to the committee. I have a suggestion, maybe just between now and December. I know that the selectmen are going to meet, well, I shouldn't, I'm making an assumption. Randy, are you gonna meet again? Both boards? Yes. After tonight?
The Whitman Board of Selectmen is meeting on the nineteenth. Then we have a special town meeting December second. So, I'm thinking probably the week before Christmas we'll meet. Frank?
Is Mrs. Kemet still here? I can't see you back there, Laura. Yeah, in other words, you guys met, I don't even know when you met, today, yesterday, whatever.
Yesterday.
One second, Mr. Oh.
Yes, I mean, I, we both are, we both are going back to our respective boards, so I, I think, are you guys meeting next, are you guys meeting next Tuesday? Yeah, we're both meeting next Tuesday night. So, of course, we don't wanna make a commitment on behalf of the whole board, since we haven't discussed it, taken a vote, et cetera, et cetera. But I know what I'm planning on saying is much of what I said tonight, we're waiting on numbers. We're trying to work through this with the Board of Selectmen from Whitman. And I want to keep it rolling as quickly as possible. I think many tonight have alluded to the very tight timeframe that we're on. And in my mind, I think we've gotta have this on lockdown between the two boards of selectmen by MLK. You know, and, and maybe it's the agreement has to be on lockdown, but we've gotta have something in place in order to back into the timing for a special town meeting if we end up getting to a place where we could have a, an agreement, you know, modified agreement. Agree with, we agree with Mr. George that it probably should be based on the revised and adopted and then reneged agreement, but tweaked for whatever that, whatever that, you know, ultimate agreement looks like. So, I don't know if that answers your question, but yes, I believe we will continue to meet. But again, I'm just one person, and Randy's just one person. And, you know, we had another selectman with us and our town administrator, but you just never know how the board's gonna go. So, I'm hopeful, but I, I can't, I can't commit fully until we meet on Tuesday.
Okay.
Okay.
Mike, do you have further to follow? It appears that they may not meet, and I know that both sides are talking about appointing a committee, and if somebody makes that motion, I'm not opposed to going through with it. My suggestion might be maybe two of us, one from Whitman and one from Hanson, informally meet with the two from Whitman and the two from Hanson, and hopefully before the next meeting? Because it appears we're meeting on the eleventh, and the selectmen are meeting on the ninth, and I'm, I'm sure you're talking December. So, it doesn't appear there's gonna be anything.
On the September eighteenth meeting, in the notes, didn't we form a committee? So, would this motion be to a judgment?
We talked about how many we were gonna have, but it was way too many.
The foundation of what the committee should have been.
What'd you have, Michelle?
Two, two.
Like twenty people?
Yeah.
I think it was large.
No, it was like eleven people. So, the vote was to impannal a new regional agreement amendment committee, announced on September eighteenth. And you recommended that it be comprised of a board of selectmen member from each town, a finance committee member from each town, town administrators, three school committee members, and two citizens.
And how many?
Two citizens.
Three school committee members and two citizens.
Three school committee members from each town or three?
No.
Total.
Three school committees total.
And two citizens, one from each town.
That's a total of eleven?
Two, four, six.
And then you would have school administration and the Mars-
I only count that as eight. Where's the other, oh, two at large citizens?
Yes.
Total.
One each town.
Okay, that, that's eleven.
Yeah, my question was just, are we changing that? Like, is that legit? Are we changing it, or are we doing something different?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, Frank.
If we have three school committee members, we're gonna argue about which town has two. May I suggest we go two school committee members and three citizens?
I was just gonna suggest the same thing.
That's, that was, that was my thought. 'Cause I can see that burning a hole in somebody's computer tomorrow.
I don't know.
What's your pleasure? We've gotta move forward here, guys.
You know, we, we do wanna get through this, okay? And I think we need two selectmen and somebody from each town from the school committee, and I think we'll be able to get through it. We wanna be able to schedule meetings and work in a timely manner. So, my recommendation would be Tuesday night, each board, each board of selectmen designates two people. You guys designate one from each town right now, and there, there's our committee.
And then-
And we move ahead.
Okay. That's kinda where I was going with it in the beginning, Randy.
Makes sense. We have to change the motion. Right, you have to change, agree to point.
So, Chair Hayes, would it be acceptable to make a motion to amend our-
Yeah, go ahead.
Regional agreement committee that has been impaneled to, at this point, simply include one school committee member from each town and two selectmen from each town with future people to be determined at a later date?
Second.
I have a motion, the second. Did you hear that motion, Michelle?
Yes, sir.
That is to amend. I have a motion, the second discussion.
Would it include FinCom?
No.
No.
So, I think I was leaving it open. So, this committee, the selectmen, whoever has input can add to it later, but to support what Randy just said, maybe we just start with one school committee member from each town, two selectmen from each town, and we can add to it as we see fit.
Does everybody understand that motion?
Yeah.
I have a motion, the second. Any further discussion?
I just think that there's a piece of this that needs to be ironed out by a, a smaller group. And beyond that, absolutely, we want whatever we come up with, because the towns have to vote on it. At the end of the day-
And the committee has to vote on it.
And the, and this committee has to vote.
The whole committee's gonna vote on it. This isn't gonna be a decision.
I, I agree with Laura when she kinda set a target date that if we are going to try and not miss a step this year, we have to, you know, expedite this process. Not foolishly, but just to get through it. And I think a smaller group does that, because I think we're gonna be able to tell early on if we're going to be able to find a solid common ground. So.
Okay. Any further discussion?
So, we have four selectmen, two school committee, two at large. Is it one at large?
No, no.
Totally different.
They're gone. So, it's just gonna be the six people then?
Just the six people.
Just wanted to make sure, because of different members.
Everybody understands that? Any further discussion? Seeing not all of us in favor? Okay.
I'd like to be on it?
Yeah, that's gonna be part of the problem is Dan wants to be, you wanna be. Chris wants to be. How about, how about if we, if the committee has faith enough in the chair and the vice chair to take this on and report back to you? 'Cause it appears, I don't know what you're gonna come up with for members, but I get everybody on the table wants to be on it.
No, I didn't say that.
So, I'll make that motion so-
Did I volunteer, somebody that didn't wanna be?
No, 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 I just said I don't wanna be.
Chair Hayes, I'll make the motion to put forth the chair and vice chair.
A point.
Discussion.
A point.
No discussion? Fred?
I think everybody's probably a worthy candidate.
Oh, so do I.
Yeah. It's just, you know, everyone feels that they wanna dig the hole and be in the trenches. And I firmly believe that that's what I'd like to be doing as well.
Yep. Sometimes when you dig the hole, you end up getting dirt on you that you didn't want to.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Just happens. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay.
You only have, you're missing a member. So you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Opposed.
For your A.
Is it unanimous?
No, it wasn't.
No, it wasn't.
Oh, I'm sorry. You abstained?
Yeah, no, I'm voting no.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you had your hand right up, Fred. Seven in favor, one against, and one, no abstentions.
Who's, wait.
Eight, nine people.
It's eight, eight, zero, one.
Six, seven, eight.
Eight, zero.
Eight, one, zero.
You're only missing one member.
I'm sorry. Eight, one, zero.
Yeah, I got it, I got it.
All right. Okay, let's move on.
All right, really? Where are we?
Acceptance of gifts.
This should be no problem. Kathy, good afternoon. Kathy Joshua would like to donate $500 from her KJ-10 Foundation to help fund, to pay off negative lunch balances at the end of the year. Thank you. Nadine Doucette, SNS. Entertained a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Ed, field trips. No field trips, right? No surplus. No surplus.
There's no surplus. I don't see anything.
No surplus.
Nothing, Michelle? No?
No.
Just field trips.
Field trips, several. Okay. Whitman-Hanson Ski Club is going on a ski trip Saturday, January 11th, coming back Saturday, January 11th. Burke Mountain Skier in Vermont, 30 to 50 students estimated. Julie Giggler and a bunch of other to be determined. They do not need a school nurse because of personnel at the ski resort. An entertained a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Cost to the district is not filled out.
Cost per student, it says-
There is, I see the cost per student, and I also saw that it was based on 30 students. What happens if they don't get 30 students?
Or, or the students pay more. So there's no cost. This is a self-funded-
Just wish, tell Joyce she please could put that zero in there.
Okay.
Cost of the district, zero. I'll add it, too.
Zero.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Thank you. Next one is a Decker trip. This is yearly. It's December 12th to the 13th, departing from the school, staying at Seacrest Hotel. It's a Decker District Conference, approximately 25 students, zero cost to the district. There are three chaperones. They are asking for a nurse waiver as they have emergency personnel on site. An entertained a motion to accept?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Next one, Shoquaya. They're doing great things, by the way. February 29th, they're coming back the same day. They go into Wendellocks, Connecticut for a Shoquaya Festival, approximately 35 students. I believe the cost of the district is zero. They have three chaperones. They are asking for a nurse waiver because there are emergency personnel on site should anything come about. An entertained a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Warrant subcommittee. I have several warrants here if you want to blanken them. Meeting minutes of the 25th of September, meeting minutes of October 10th, and meeting minutes of October 24th. An entertained a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, everyone. Policy subcommittee, I don't believe that they've met.
Nothing's met.
No? Insurance subcommittee? No? Facilities?
Next December.
Next month.
This coming meeting, so-
Yep, before the school committee meeting.
At 6:00 on the December meeting, there will be a facility subcommittee here in the library. It's open to all.
Yeah, can I, Mr. Hayes, can I just mention, before we meet for that, I just wanted to brief the committee on the Whitman, MSBA tour of Whitman Middle School. No decisions have been made. The person who was running the tour for MSBA had some questions about the assessment methodology regarding this. She was extremely impressed with the preparation of the application by Mr. Sandlin and team. But she did ask about our assessment, the issues around assessment, basically, would there be funds moving forward with a feasibility study? I told them exactly where we were at, extremely transparent with, with the team. I'm awaiting a phone call in the near future, hopefully by Christmas, to see where we stand. Two members of that team singled, or brought me aside and singled out the fact that the they've seen facilities who in districts have much more money than we have and are in better condition or supposed to be in better condition. She, they commended Ernie and his team for working with not a lot and putting together, or keeping a building running on paperclips and rubber bands. They were extremely impressed. And I think that went yards with the team as far as them investing in us in the future because they saw how we maintain even a very old building. So I'll brief the committee, hopefully at the next school committee meeting, where we stand with MSBA. But I just wanted to say that publicly commend Ernie and talk about the assessment, and that was one of their stopgaps and a major bone of concern for them. So that's all I have.
Can I?
Fred?
The Collins Report, I don't know if you shared that with them or not?
No.
Where that's identified as part of the capital plan for Whitman, and I know that any funding source wouldn't be dependent upon operating budget anyways.
We did clarify that all capital is separated.
Okay.
Because they wanted to tie it into other, other regions that have capital tied into their regional agreement. I said Whitman does Whitman, Hanson does Hanson, and this is the building that is commingled. So that was a clarifier and I think a relief for them as well.
Those of you who have never been on an MSBA visit, there's about eight to 10 people sitting around the table, very similar to what goes on here, badgering everyone, questioning. They have a ton of questions. They tour the facility. They do a pretty extensive report. How long would you say they were there, Jeff? Three and a half hours?
About three hours.
Yeah, 8:30.
Three to three and a half hours. I have, I was there, and it is in the first one I've done. So it's pretty intense. Let's just-
Question. Can you just repeat what the steps are? So you'll get a call, you said by December.
We're hoping to, they're going to tell us where we stand, and, and I think the next step is putting forth a feasibility study. This was a senior study. So the first piece was the application. We were one of 32, 40 schools, they said, were in the senior study. And then it's a need base from there. So the next step is if they affirm us, it's moving forward to say, okay, we're in the queue here, now can you gather funding for the feasibility study? So that would be the next step.
The feasibility study, Don, runs roughly $500,000. And it has to be voted by the town that is doing it, and that money comes first. Some of it is reimbursable, but you have to be, that's one thing they made very clear because they asked about the financial status, status of Whitman. Your ability to move forward.
To fund the feasibility.
Right. So it's, it's a lengthy process, the feasibility study, I would say, Fred, you were on one, it takes a year and a half to two years.
Yeah, a couple of years for, from this one, from the high school, yeah, way back.
Yeah, it's a couple of years.
And that would be potential planning of-
That's all planning.
Project, architect.
They hire, they hire an architect and you get right into it. Drawings, what you want, meetings open, public meetings, it's, it's extensive.
It's very extensive.
We, we did this one, did the Whitman, did Hanson's when they were talking about building it, went all through the feasibility study, and then it got voted down.
Right. And that's, that's their concern, is moving forward with a feasibility study, backing MSBA, and then having the town vote the project out.
They want to know if you're ready.
If you're ready. And we're pretty confident in, in what we put out there, and George being the former principal of that building was really able to specify the definite need in the building for not just a renovation, but for a new building. And, and they were really acceptable, accepting of that information. So we'll kick that can, and hopefully I'll have some, some information in a, in a positive way for us even if not December, January, because I don't know where they're standing. I'm hoping, they told us they'd give us some information sooner than later, but I'm not sure where we sit in that process.
Thanks.
Legislative update, Fred?
I think I gave it before where, you know, money's being tied up in the conference committee right now, and if they don't vote it before they go out on resource, recess, rather, who knows what happens to it.
Okay. Pilgrim area?
We met in October and November, just last Thursday. A couple of things, we reorganized for the new school season. We have an annual audit that went really well. I'll share a copy with the executive secretary so she can distribute it, as well as an annual report written by our executive director. We will be moving down as of June, June 2nd, I'm sorry, January 2nd meeting to the Pilgrim Academy in that location and giving up our home at the Hatch Building in Pembroke. And we will go forward with that. We've, the building really is not in a condition that Pembroke wants to do anything with. We've been just kind of piecemealing things together, so we're going to consolidate our office down into Plymouth. We closed our budget, obviously because of the audit and so forth. $187,975.72 is what Whitman-Hanson paid to Pilgrim Area Collaborative last year. We're getting back $3,796. And that money is from reserves or, as we see them, excess and deficiency, but we don't use that term, and it's 25% of the total. We make up 8.5% of the total Pilgrim Area Collaborative budget, and we're deciding to take 25% as we did last year and send it back to the member towns. These are the member towns, not the non-member towns, which does exceed the number of member towns we have.
Questions from Mr. Boyce? Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Negotiation subcommittee hasn't been meeting, but that is going to have to happen sooner than later because we are coming up on, it's hard to believe, new contracts. So think about who would like to be on that committee. It meets several times when it's going on, and some of them are at length. I've been here on 11:30 at night it's happened, so if you want to be on that committee, think about it. It's going to, it lasts.
Hey, Bob. Bob?
Yes.
When are the contracts? What, when are they coming up? What year?
We're in year two right now. Got it, one for, no, 2021.
I got it. So we have one more, year and a half.
Yeah.
So what do we have to send, a letter this month?
We actually get a letter.
Yeah. We, we're speaking with the association already, so.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to have to have an executive session to suss graduate with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and I'm declaring that it does. So when we come out of executive session, the only vote we, we will be taking is to adjourn. So good night, everyone, and thank you for coming to a very interesting meeting.
Move to go into executive session?
Yes.
Make a motion to vote.
I've got it. Dan? Fred?
Yes.
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 Okay. Good night.